Get into the public comment and then your agenda, sir.
Okay, I'll call the order of the Sparks City Council meeting for eleven thirteen two thousand eighteen with a roll call, please.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Council members Abbott.
Here.
Lawson. Bybee.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna, we're gonna skip right to public comment. I'll open the public comment period. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak this time, fill out one of these cards for me, please. First of all, we've got Victoria Rios. Victoria, come on down. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Ron Smith.
Thank you.
My name is Victoria Rios and I am here representing the Office of United States Senator Catherine Cortez Masto. I would like to congratulate her mayor. I'm also personally a resident of Sparks.
Great.
And welcome you and congratulate you. We look forward to working with you and continuing to work towards our great relationship with the city of Sparks. Thank you for having us here today.
Thank you, Victoria. Appreciate that. Okay, Lee. Did you want to speak? Lee Gibson? Come on down, Lee. Welcome. Probably hurt myself.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for the record, Lee Gibson, Regional Transportation Commission. First, I'd like to congratulate Councilman Lawson and Councilwoman Bybee for your reelection. But I also want to recognize someone who's very near and dear to the RTC, and that's Mayor Ron Smith. Ron, we've appreciated you and your leadership at RTC for all of the goodness that you've provided us. Your leadership, you know, infrastructure is not something that's easy. It takes a long-term vision and it takes a commitment to get through a lot of very difficult legal, financial, and institutional challenges to see success. And we have seen some success in your tenure at RTC from the Southeast Connector to the Pyramid McCarron intersection to the Fourth Prater Way project to Virginia Street in Reno. Yes, we do mention projects in Reno and throughout the area. It's been a long, and you've been, you've been a long-term and very valuable leader. On a personal level, I have to tell you that I appreciate your friendship and your counsel. You and I have shared grief together. You and I have shared golf together. I had a good hug from Scott a while back. And you guys have put up with my lousy golf on a number of occasions, and anyone who can put up with my golf is a true friend. I also want to thank Mayor, former Mayor Martini, or Mayor Martini, I believe, the protocol is you get to always be called whatever.
He'll always be the mayor.
Yeah, he'll always be the mayor. You know, there are not enough, what I've loved about Mayor Martini was his use of grammar and his use of words. I think in my summary, I don't think there are enough adverbs and adjectives to positively describe his great leadership that we've been through. I particularly remember a time when you, Councilman Lawson, Neil Crutts, we were all in Washington. We were having a big meeting with Senator Reed, and it was Mayor Martini who stepped up and led that meeting with a whole bunch of community leaders in that room. Later on, what happened, things started moving on Southeast Connector regulatory and legal issues. Funds started flowing in for things like Fourth Prater. And it just began, or just was, was a real testament, I think, his demeanor and leadership and bipartisanship in that meeting that brought a lot of great success to our region. He too carried that vision of infrastructure, just as you carry it. And we at the RTC, me personally, will look forward to you being a great mayor. So, thank you very much and glad to be here.
Thank you, Lee. Appreciate those words. You know, I've been playing golf for forty-five years, but if you saw me play, you'd swear it was my first day, so that's that game. Levon Brooks, come on down. Thanks for being here today, Levon.
Mayor Ron. Council, congratulations to all of you. And Mayor Ron, we've known each other for about nineteen years now. And for those of you who don't know, Ron was actually on my board when I started at High Sierra Industries eighteen years ago, actually. And so we've kind of tossed back and forth relationships, but had the pleasure of working with Ron more closely when we were working together at High Sierra. And what I loved about you, Ron, is, and I watched you as you met with people in our area, so listening and really taking seriously the cons, seriously all of the challenges that you face with your constituents, whether it was somebody who was complaining about somebody parking in their front yard, but every, every situation, or whether it was working on really weighty issues, flood control, the RTC, every single thing got your attention in the same way, and that's really what governance is about. And what I also love about the city of Sparks, and I live in the county, but we love the quiet regard that you have for the people. And this is really how it should be, how governance should work, that we listen and we respectfully disagree, and then we find solutions together, and I love you for doing that. What you represent as a city is a really good example for all of us in our community. I really want to protect that and how we treat each other in Sparks, so thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, I'm so proud of you and I'm so proud of the long-term relationship we had, and I hope that that will continue, so congratulations, all of you.
Thank you, Levon. Thank you. Bill, come on down, Bill. Bill Wagner. We can't see you today. You're wearing camo. Welcome, Bill.
Thank you very much. Put on my wife's glasses.
They look good on you.
Yeah.
Look better on her, I bet.
Yeah. Does she know you have her glasses?
Anyway. Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'd like to address the, I was going to address the incoming and outgoing mayors, but it looks like I'm only gonna address.
The outgoing mayor is sitting right there.
I'm watching you, Bill. Go ahead. Oh, there you are. Oh, great, great, great. Good deal. That's wonderful. I'm gonna speak about you, Ron, first, okay? Congratulations are in order. You were voted in because you're the most qualified person to handle this rewarding job. After eight years, four years as an apprentice, and four years as a journeyman. You are certainly ready to solve any concerns you and the council will face. Your intelligence, personality, great smile, and passion for the job will excel you into being a great mayor. In conclusion, enjoy your new job.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Now, Gino. Can you hear me back there, Gino?
Yeah, I hear you just.
That's good. Gino, you've been the mayor of this great city for a record-breaking thirteen years. You should be very proud of all the, of all your accomplishments. You have been the glue who kept this city of Sparks going during good years and difficult years. In conclusion, if I may speak, for all the citizens of Sparks, I have five words left for you to say. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Five point one, approval of the agenda. Mr. Lawson.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take a little bit out of order here, and I'd like to move nine point three up to right after approval of the minutes and approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Dare.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. And this will be the first time I'm not able to vote. It passes unanimously. Thank you.
You might as well give me that little voting thing out of, you don't even need that.
What's it doing here, anyway? Yeah. I wanna, I wanna touch it. Okay, six point one, consideration of possible approval of the minutes of the regular Sparks City Council meeting of October twenty-second, two thousand eighteen. Any changes? Okay, looking for a motion, Ms. Bybee.
I move to accept the minutes from the October twenty-second meeting as presented.
Okay, and looking for a second, Ms. Abbott.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, or please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, we're gonna go to nine point three. And I want to preface this for a minute here. When I was elected in June twelfth, the camera crew came out and they asked me what my first order of duty was gonna be, and I said, that's five months away. That could change ten times. Knowing all along what we wanted to do, and we wanted to honor Mr. Martini, our mayor, for the last thirteen years. And so, let's just do this thing here, okay? And after, we still have to vote on it, so it's not sure, Mr. Martini, but South Deander Parkway.
And Gino, I'm not sure, but I think the signs are going up as we speak, so on the way home. And this, this road now runs right past.
I'll check it on Google. Yo, thanks, council, and where's, is John Erickson here?
He's out supervising the mess.
He's putting the sign up.
Out there making the signs.
I'll knock him out.
Well, look. Ron.
I nicknamed him Speed Hump because he puts speed humps everywhere.
Okay, if you look, if you look up the screens, the signs are up.
Yes! We don't want to see that on eBay.
Let me say one thing, I am so humbled by this, really.
What would Bob Chisholm say? Come on, buttercup? Marshmallow?
Marshmallow.
I'm bored, Ray, and I just love the city, and it's just, it's just humble, really, so thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Gino.
And you'll never, you'll never lose your way. You always find your way home.
You just say, take me to Gino Martini, and I'm gonna find my way home. Can't lose from there, can you, bud?
So stick around, we're gonna have the vote here.
Stick around for the vote.
He does have the gamble right there.
Okay, so this, this item is consideration, discussion, and possible approval of a recommendation from the Regional Street Naming Committee to rename South Deander Parkway between Vista Boulevard and North Deander Parkway to Gino Martini Parkway. So, Mr. Lawson.
No, Ron and I talked about this, it's been six, seven months ago now.
Yeah, quite a while ago.
Since we talked about this, and I couldn't think of a better place. I wanted to name Prater after you, but we couldn't get that done. So we got the next best thing was to name the street that you have to drive on every day when you leave your, your place there in Tuscana. So every day you'll see how much the people of Sparks love you, how much we love you, and how much we respect you. So with that, I'm gonna move to approve the recommendation from the Regional Street Naming Committee to rename South Deander Parkway between Vista Boulevard and North Deander Parkway to Gino Martini Parkway.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Ms. Bybee.
I would second that and also echo Ed's comments on, it's a way for all of us, you won't ever be forgotten. We wouldn't forget you. We didn't need a street named, but it's a kind of a bonus, as you would say. And such an honor to have worked with you the last four years, and you, we will always, we'll always know where you are. We always know where to find you, so I happily second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, Mr. Dare?
I just want to say thank you. This last two years has been fantastic, and we definitely will be calling you, hanging out, and there's many boards that we still need you on, okay? We commit to you that you, we'll make sure you don't have to put them all day long, so there you go. We'll take them.
Mr. Abbott.
I'll keep it short. You're the man, Gino. That's fair. That's it.
And I'm sure, I tell you this all the time, I love you, man. Thanks for everything you've done. Okay, hang on a minute.
You never know.
You get all excited. We're gonna vote right now. We almost forgot, and then it wouldn't have been official. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously like we knew it would.
It looks weird with only four votes up there.
Well, you know, we had the agenda, and I'm sure it would have raised the agenda. I'm gonna call this picture anyway.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
Happy trails, G, Gino. What a great guy. Okay, seven announcements, presentations, recognition items, and items of special interest. Seven point one, City Manager, announcement of vacancy on the Sparks Senior Citizens Advisory. You can go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several, so we'll just take them one at a time. The following committee appointments are available. Senior Sparks Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. The committee requires one member and one alternate from wards one through five, and two members and one alternate from the mayor. Members should be residents of the city of Sparks, preferably over the age of fifty-five, who have a desire to learn more about interactions between the city's aging senior population and the city government, and a willingness to share their collective knowledge with others. Applications will be accepted for this position until the close of business on Friday, November sixteenth. Next, there's appointment available for the Airport Noise Advisory Board. One member, who must be a resident representative, filling a partial term which will end on twelve thirty-one eighteen, and then to the following two-year term, which will expire twelve thirty-one of two thousand twenty. Applications for this position will be accepted until the close of business on Friday, November thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Also, we have the Washoe County District Board of Health. One member to fill a four-year term must be a physician licensed to practice medicine, which will run through January first of two thousand nine, well, the term will run from January first of two thousand nineteen to December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two. Applicants, applications will be accepted until the close of business on Friday, November thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Next, the Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee. One member who should have commercial development industry experience to fill a four-year term which will run from January first, two thousand nineteen, to December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two. Applications for this position will be accepted until the close of business on Friday, November thirtieth, of two thousand eighteen. And finally, there, a term will expire on this committee on December two thousand eighteen, the Sparks Planning Commission. We're looking for two members for four-year terms. Applications will be accepted for this until the close of business on December twenty-first, two thousand eighteen. Persons interested in any of these positions and serving on these committees should complete a volunteer application available from the city clerk's office. You may also apply online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. Click on Government on the webpage, and then click Volunteering for a Sparks Board or Commission and complete a volunteer application. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. Seven point two, City Manager, announcement of the process for accepting applications and the process for filling the vacancy of, on the City Council Ward Three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The following position is now vacant, the Sparks City Council Ward Number Three. Persons interested in being considered by the Sparks Mayor to fill this vacant position should do the following. They should email the following information to the city clerk at t gardner at cityofsparks.us. On that, you should give your name, your current address. You must note whether you are a registered voter in the city of Sparks, and it's preferred that you provide a brief statement on why you would like to fill this open council position, and optionally, you can submit a current resume. Alternatively, the same information can be delivered to the city clerk's office at four thirty-one Prater Way in Sparks. The Sparks Mayor will review the applicant's information. He will determine the number of applicants to be interviewed on Monday, December tenth, two thousand eighteen, at the regular council meeting. At that time, the Sparks Mayor will forward one name to the council as his selection for the vacant position. The Sparks City Council will then vote on whether to ratify the mayor's appointment. Applications will be accepted from today, Tuesday, November thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, until five P M. on Friday, November sixteenth of two thousand eighteen. So just, again, opens today, closes into business on Friday. So, Mr. Mayor, those are your instructions on how you would like to fill that position per the city charter. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll move on to seven point three, Proclamation, National Apprenticeship Week. Who's, is there anybody here to accept this? Come on down. Diane, welcome.
Mayor.
Come on down. Okay. Proclamation, whereas apprenticeship programs help to recruit and develop a highly skilled workforce, which improves workplace productivity, reduces turnover costs, and increases employee retention. And whereas apprenticeship training creates industry-driven and flexible training solutions to meet national and local needs, and gives individuals of all ages the chance to learn from construction industry professionals. And whereas currently in Nevada, there are seventy-eight registered programs, three thousand three hundred and twenty-four registered apprentices, forty-seven percent are minorities, four percent are female, and eight percent are veterans. And nationally, this skilled craft apprenticeship program has been in existence for over one hundred years. Whereas apprenticeship programs help students and workers achieve and retain construction careers while also assisting local construction employers obtain the skilled workforce needed to help drive growth in our local community. And whereas the Northern Nevada Building and Construction Trades Union and associated contractors invite community members to visit their joint apprenticeship training centers to see the great opportunities and programs available right here in northern Nevada. And this proclamation was done when Gino was here, so I'll read it that way. Now, therefore, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim, November twelfth through the eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, as National Apprenticeship Week. In and for the city of Sparks, and encourages all of our citizens to recognize the importance and benefits of the quality apprenticeship programs in our community. In witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Sparks, Nevada, to be affixed this thirtieth day of October, two thousand and eighteen. So please, please introduce yourselves, and then we'll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council people. Diane Vanderwell, and I am the trades recruiter for the Northern Nevada Apprenticeship Coordinators Association. And I brought along with me some apprentices and some other professionals in the trades, and I would like them to introduce themselves to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rob Benner with the Northern Nevada Building Trades Council. Congratulations on your election and reelection for fellow council members. Thank you for highlighting national apprenticeship week. It's something you've done in the past, and we really appreciate it. We are trying to draw more attention to our programs that, you know, to show people that these are good careers. These are good middle-class jobs, and that there's a great need for construction workers here in Nevada, especially when we're here trying to build a new Nevada. It's, it's kind of hard with an aging, aging workforce and, and, you know, and high demand. So, we really appreciate you guys highlighting this. These are good careers. If, like I, like I keep telling people, you know, can construct, the construction industry is important to the growth of Nevada. Our average age of a construction worker here in, in Nevada is, I believe, fifty, you know, and, and when you consider most construction workers retire in their fifties, you don't see too many construction workers over sixty. You know, we're gonna lose half our workforce on top of, in the next ten years, on top of the, they say, two hundred thousand, you know, extra workers that we're going to need. So apprenticeship is key to this. We need to train the next generation. Thank you for, thank you for all that, all that you are doing to promote apprenticeship.
Okay. You're up.
I'm up. A little nervous. There's a lot of people in here. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Michelle Abel, and I am living proof that apprentices, or apprenticeships are amazing, amazing things. I went through the Electrical Workers Apprenticeship about twenty years ago, so got twenty years as a union electrician here in Reno and Sparks, and my life would have gone so much differently had I not gone through the apprenticeship and been led in that direction. I've, I've been afforded, luckily, I've been able to travel for work. When things got slow here, a lot of us left. We come back, though, you know, and it's all because of the apprenticeship. I was a single mom with two kids, and I would not made it had it not been for my five years of free schooling and becoming a journeyman afterwards. So, thank you again for the proclamation for this week.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us. Chad Rookie, for the record, Pipe Trades Apprenticeship Assistant Coordinator. I have here one of our apprentice, Eric Silverberg. I just wanted to touch a little bit on, on the things that we're working on with the CTE programs with the, with the school district and, and the city. Appreciate all your support and everything that you do when you hear our names out there. Anything you can do for us is definitely appreciated, and a big part of our apprenticeship, at least plumbing and pipe fitting, we give back. You know, I don't know that that gets reflected enough either, the things that we do for the city of Sparks, city of Reno, different organizations. And with that said, I'm gonna turn it over to our apprentice, and he's gonna give a little bit about his story. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Again, my name is Eric Silverberg. I believe I'm probably at sixty-one, the oldest apprentice of the pipe trades locally. I had a thirty-year career in the postal service. I retired about five years ago. And after three years of watching westerns twice and, you know, skiing, and you can only fish so much, so I decided I want to get back in the workforce and be a little more productive, healthy, thank goodness, and they were willing to take me on, so it's very diverse. I mean, here I am sixty-one years old and starting another career, so it's a wonderful thing. The things about the apprenticeship that I see, you, you earn as you learn. You go to college, and nothing against college, I went for a few years, but most of us come out with debt, college debt. After five years of the apprenticeship, you turn out and you're making a full wage. It's a, you know, a beautiful thing. It offers a lot. I love working with my hands. If you're into that type of thing, you see things being built, and it's been very rewarding, and I see it as being very rewarding for my future. And I would like to thank you for allowing me to speak, and again, congratulations.
Good for you, and congratulations to you.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Hi, guys. My name is Jose Medina, and I work for, for Junior for, where's the, she may have worked in Junior. And every day I'm looking for better opportunities. And when I, somebody told me that Union, I started to go in the Union. It's different, an apprentice, and I got a more knowledge. And my life changed with my family, and everything is better. I like it. Thank you for, for the new opportunities, and thank you, guys.
Thank you. You know, before I present this to you, anybody listening out there, there is no better time to, to get an apprenticeship than right now. You work, and you go to school, you earn money while you're going to school, then, then the trades pay very well. You know, the, the high schools are set up for college curriculum. Not everybody wants to go to college. That's why they drop out. They identify those people by, by third grade, which is unfortunate, but to. Thank you, and I'm going to present this to you. [applause] Now, we're going to have a presentation, the Sixteenth Annual Sparks Mayor's Cup Tournament. Andre, welcome. And let me say, before you even get started, you always do such a good job with that tournament. It's sold out every year, I believe.
That's very kind of you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Smith and council members. My name is Andrea Steagle, Recreation Admin Supervisor with the Sparks Parks and Recreation Department. I'm here before you today with a recap and highlight of the Sparks Sixteenth Annual Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament that was held on October nineteenth at Red Hot Golf and Resort, with the net proceeds benefiting the Sparks Youth Scholarship Fund. Our main tournament sponsors include our partner, Red Hot Golf and Resort, and Albert Sino. Their in-kind support and staff accommodating us every year has allowed us to continue this fundraiser. Additionally, Mr. Sino had donated one thousand dollars in golf equipment for the tournament each year for the raffle, which is invaluable. In two thousand and sixteen, Hometown Health and Renowned Health stepped up to sponsor the awards luncheon, and they have continued to do so since then. Kylie Ranch and the Charles N. Mathewson Foundation have also been valued partners since two thousand and fifteen. The Mayor's Cup, as Mayor Smith mentioned, had a full field of players, one hundred, excuse me, one hundred and fifty-six players, thirty-nine teams, the largest participation to date. The mayor and city council members kicked off the tournament with opening remarks and a special thanks to all of the teams and participants taking part. It was a great day golf. We got a lot of great feedback from the players. There were more than thirty golf hole sponsors at the tournament that day, with the encore signage, once again donated by Mark Gil Martin and Kevin Hall, the owners of our local Hole in One International. We've also been fortunate to have a core group of companies who help each year with product donations, some of the signage that you see here in this piece, including New West Distributing, Swire Coca-Cola, Maury Distributing, La Fuente Mexican Restaurant, Porta Subs, Doughboy's Donuts, and Eldorado Resort and Casino. Chucky Meadows Park Foundation joins us each year, providing volunteers and assistance with our Hole in One promotion. We had the highest raffle ticket sales ever this year with more than seventy prize packages thanks to the generosity of our local businesses. The awards luncheon sponsored by Hometown Health and Renowned Health was greatly appreciated by all. The first, second, and third place winners were acknowledged at the luncheon, and the winning team for the second year in a row was Sierra Builders of Nevada. To date, the Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament has raised more than one hundred thousand dollars for the city's youth scholarship fund. Last year alone, the fund assisted seventy-eight local children, providing access to things like swimming lessons, basketball, ballet, and a host of other programs at little or no cost to those children. In concluding, in addition to the community support that the Mayor's Cup receives each year that we're very grateful for, I'd also like to acknowledge the mayor, the city council members, the city manager, the city staff, and departments for their assistance, support, and participation, because this truly is a team effort every year. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Andre. Great event, really is. Thank you. Okay, seven point five, the Twentieth Annual Shields Turkey Trot. Tanya, which is coming up pretty soon.
[laughing]
Yeah.
A week from tomorrow?
Yes.
It'll be Thursday.
Next Thursday.
Thursday.
Yeah.
I lost track of time. We have a new mayor.
Too much fun.
Ta-da. Oh. Maybe. Almost worked. Thank you. Right on. There is, Sir Stuffy. Good afternoon, Mayor Smith and council members. Tanya Ramchetti, Sparks Parks Recreation Specialist, and I am here to do a little brief look at the twentieth annual Shields Turkey Trot. And this is our mascot, Sir Stuffy. Twenty years ago, our event was held every year on Thanksgiving, and it was held in a dirt lot over at the Marina, which I think at the time was still the pit.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, first year, ten K still in a two-mile, which started off of Lincoln, going east, and it has grown quite a bit. Participation numbers. Over the twenty, yep, twenty-six thousand people have attended the event over the last twenty years. Our first race had two hundred and fifty participants. Nineteenth last year, sixteen fifty-two. So we're right now at probably half, which is usual, the same, a little bit higher than last year at this time, but they always wait till the last minute. And the highest has been twenty-four. That year, we had probably, I think, the seventy-degree weather. It was so nice and so warm. We had four hundred and fifty to five hundred people register on race day. It was crazy. It was fun, though. It's a fun trip. Locations, like I said, we started off at the pit, the dirt road. Tracy was there with me. Then we moved over to Shields in two thousand and ten, when they became our title sponsor. They've been wonderful. They've been very nice with letting us use their building, and their parking lot, and their staff. And as you can tell, our three logos that we've had since the last, first to the tenth, and now to the twentieth. And that's my presentation. I'd like to invite all of you to come and dress up nice and warm and come out and have some fun before you go and eat your turkey dinner.
So what time does it start, and what time does registration start?
Race starts at eight-thirty. Registration ends on Thursday of this week for pre-registration, and then it goes on to online. And then we also do, next week is pre-packet pickup. From nine in the morning until nine at night at Shields. What's that? Yes. Mr. Abbott, Mr. Lawson, and Mr. Dar are already registered, which I love. Thank you very much.
Is our mayor registered? I just wanted to...
He's going to come.
The mayor's going to run over there from my house.
He's going to start for us.
Maybe not.
He's going to start it with Sir Stuffy.
I will be there to start the race.
Yes.
Yes, I'm looking forward to it.
I thank you very much. And I brought you some swag. I think you guys all have some swag up there. You guys need to wear your headbands, I'm going to tell you.
Thanks, Tanya. Any questions or comments for Tanya? Mr. Dare, go ahead. You're always going to say something about running.
Well, I just want to say it keeps us healthy and ready to go, but you guys do a great job each year, and...
Thank you.
Anybody wants to come on out, we can run as a team, but it's a great time. I call it earning your turkey, so...
It does. And our proceeds go to, some of our proceeds go to Keep Chucky Meadows Beautiful, and then some of them go to the Youth Scholarship Foundation as well.
It's a fantastic event, and if you can't run the ten K, do the six miles, like someone like Donald, because he's so young and can't run that. He can do the two, he walks the two, so it's okay, bud.
I power walk.
Phantom might be out there again this year.
Can I give Mr. Dare a bad time, because he wears his mittens everywhere he goes in July, no matter how hot it is, but he can wear his mittens on Thursday, because we don't want his dude, real hands to get cold.
I don't know, it might be warm, you never know. It's Nevada, it can change day to day.
Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Before you go, Tanya, this is a great family event.
Yes, it is.
I know my family, we've been doing it about fifteen years together, and it is the great start to our Thanksgiving. I love seeing the families out there, the families that come as a themed group, which is always fun to watch, young, old, doesn't matter, as long as you can walk, crawl, or whatever, you'll have fun out there.
Lots of families come out there. Last year, we had a dad who was dressed as a pilgrim, and his baby was dressed as a turkey.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tanya. Thank you. So, early registration, what time on Thursday?
Thursday by five-thirty.
Five-thirty. And don't worry, it won't be cold at that time in the morning. Okay, we'll move on to consent items. Anybody want to pull one? Okay, looking for a motion? Mr. Dare?
I moved to approve the consent items as they are. Seven points, I'm sorry, eight point one through...
Eight-nine.
Eight-nine.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second, Mr. Lawson?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. We'll move on to general business now, nine point one. Consideration of possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of appointment to the Sparks Planning Commission from the following pool of applicants listed in alphabetical order. David Blacko, Jonathan Crawford, Donald Kennedy, and Andrew Nego. I hope I didn't butcher that too much, so... The mayor recommends David Blacko. Many comments, questions? Okay, looking for a motion? David's here, I saw him earlier, where's he at? Oh, there he is. Looking for a motion? Mr. Lawson?
Moved to approve the mayor's choice of David Blacko to fill the spot on the Sparks Planning Commission.
Okay, we have a motion, Mr. Dare?
Second.
I'm sorry, that was supposed to be you, but I missed it.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. David, did you want to say a few words?
Yes.
Come on down. And thanks for being part of us.
Yes, I'm honored to be here. So my name is David Blacko. I just wanted to start by saying I've called Sparks home for nearly thirty years. I grew up here, and looking back, I wouldn't have chosen anywhere else had I had the opportunity. Thank you, Ron, and the Sparks City Council, and Gino, I know he's not here, and I wanted to thank him also in this, but I know that we all are very excited to see where Sparks ends up here soon under Ron's guidance, and we have a lot of faith in Ron. I know that he has some big shoes to fill, and Gino's endearment for this town was unprecedented, and I'm happy to be part of the decision-making process here. Thank you very much.
Thanks, David. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, nine point two. Consideration of possible approval of the mayor's recommendation of appointment to the Chucky Meadows Regional Planning Commission from the following pool of applicants listed in the alphabetical order. Mary Brock, Scott Carey, Shelley Reed, and Diane Vanderwall. And Mayor Martini picked Diane Vanderwall. Mr. Lawson?
Well, I'd like to approve Diane Vanderwell, also because she lives in Ward Two, that makes her more qualified in my mind for the regional planning, regional planning commission.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second, Ms. Bybee?
I would like to second and thank Diane for her expertise that she brings to our regional planning now and to the Sparks planning, and her experience through the years working with county also, so I respect her experience and what she brings representing the city of Sparks.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Diane, you want to come down and say a few words? Come on, you've been doing this for a while now, so...
But it's not as easy on this side as it is that side. Good afternoon, Diane Vanderwell. For the record, I want to thank all of you for the reappointment. I greatly appreciate it. Served on the city of Sparks Planning Commission now, I think, almost four years, and I can say it is a great planning commission because we have a great city council, so I really enjoy working with all of you and learning some more, and then also taking it on to regional, so I appreciate your support of me. Thank you.
And you're the chair right now?
I am past chair of regional planning, but I'm chair of city of Sparks, yes.
Okay, got you.
Yes.
Thanks for all you do, Diane. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, nine point four. Consideration of possible approval of a recommendation to Sparks, Sparks Parks and Recreation Commission to name Victorian Square Amphitheater after Tony Armstrong. Tracy, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Smith and council members. Tracy Dominguez, Parks and Recreation Director. I'm before you today on behalf of the Sparks Parks and Recreation Commission, seeking your approval to rename the amphitheater down on Victorian Square. I was wondering, thinking... For those unfamiliar, it's down off of Victorian Avenue and Pyramid. It's the green circular roof here. It was named Saint Mary's in the past, but our contract of sponsorship has ended, it ended a couple of years ago, actually. So through the park naming committee, they would like to recommend renaming it Tony Armstrong Amphitheater. And I have the Parks and Recreation Commission Chair Andrea Tavner and myself here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments? Is anybody in the audience here from Tony's family? Nope?
I had, I've spoken a few times with Richard, so I'm guessing he had to work.
Okay, he's a firefighter, isn't he?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, no question or comments, looking for a motion? Mr. Abbott?
Yep, I moved to approve naming the Victorian Square Amphitheater Tony Armstrong Amphitheater.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second, Ms. Bybee?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, nine point five. Consideration of possible approval of a recommendation from the Sparks Parks and Recreation Commission to name the future park to be located at seventy-one thirty Tooth Drive, Jack Ravilio Memorial Park.
So again, good afternoon, mayor, council members. Tracy Dominguez, Parks and Recreation Director. Before you, there's a recommendation to name a future park site, which is on Tooth Drive. It's highlighted in blue. It's out in the foothills of Wingfield, and it will be, it's under design right now, it will be built this fiscal year. And the recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Commission is to name this park the Jack Ravilio Memorial Park.
Okay, questions or comments? Looking for a motion? Ms. Bybee?
You're right. Okay. I moved, I moved to approve the future park located at seventy-one thirty Tooth Drive, Jack Ravilio Memorial Park.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second, Mr. Dare? Or, sorry, Mr. Abbott, I keep skipping over you for some reason. Mr. Abbott?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
I'd need danger filled the Sparks Council.
I know. No respect. Seeing none, please vote.
It's all about seniority.
I know, that's what it is. Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to nine point six, and I just want to tell, my daughter's sitting in the audience, and she's always complained about dog parks out at Black Hills, so, and she moved, so it won't help you any right now. Nine point six. Consideration of possible approval of a recommendation from the Sparks Parks and Recreation Commission to name the future park to be located at forty ninety-nine Black Hills Drive, Black Hills Park. Tracy?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Council members, Tracy Dominguez, Parks and Recreation Director. For our future site, Black Hills Drive, it's shaded in blue, and it's behind the Sparks Fire Station here, and here's the park site, and then just north of Golden Eagle Regional Park. This is scheduled to be built fiscal year twenty, which begins July one of nineteen. The recommendation is to name it Black Hills Park, and this park is not your traditional park due to its proximity to Golden Eagle and the various playgrounds we have at that site. This will include a small and large dog park at this site. We have a lot of demand out north for dog parks, and we're also hoping to have a future dog park at Del Cobre, which is our furthest north park, so with that, I'll answer any questions you might have for Black Hills Drive.
I think that's going to make a lot of people out there happy.
I think so.
Okay, any questions or comments, Ms. Bybee? Okay, any questions or comments, Ms. Bybee?
I'm ready, whoops. I'm ready to make a motion, but I want to make a comment first, on, um, my residents in Ward Four are going to be extremely happy. I've been four years on the council. Right after I was elected, I had people calling me about dog parks, and so, I'm, and I know it's longer than that, so, I'm excited about doing the small and large park, and with that, I moved to approve the naming of the future park located at 4099 Black Hill Drive, Black Hills Park.
Okay, we have a motion, and looking for a second, Mr. Dare?
For real this time?
Yeah, for real this time.
I just want to make sure. I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Easy stuff. Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, we haven't named a park in a long time, so, thank you.
Then we got three in one day. Okay. Um, nine point seven. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval to purchase aluminum sulfate from Thatcher Chemical Company at a unit price of $375 a ton, and we have a lot of tons, using the joint provision of the City of Las Vegas, contract number five, one, five, zero, zero, six, three, dash, S K dash A, estimated annual amount of $295,000. Welcome.
Mayor, that's a mouthful.
I know.
Mayor, council members, for the record, Kim Labor, Maintenance Manager at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. Um, item nine point seven is a request for the city council to approve the, uh, purchase of aluminum sulfate from Thatcher Chemical, in the amount of $375 a ton, with an annual estimated amount of $295,000. Um, aluminum sulfate is used in one of our processes at the treatment plant to settle out the fine materials when we do, uh, filter backwashes, and it's also used on occasion to treat for phosphorus. We have two processes out at the treatment plant, um, to treat phosphorus. We have an austera process, we also have a biological treatment process, but occasionally, we need to use aluminum sulfate to precipitate out additional phosphorus, and that's in order to meet our discharge permit. Uh, we're using a joiner contract, um, per the N R S, which allows us to utilize the same contract price um, that Thatcher Chemical bid to the City of Las Vegas. Um, Spark's share of the $295,000 would be approximately $100,000, and with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, Kim, questions or comments? Seeing none, looking for a motion, Mr. Abbott?
I have a question, but, um, how, what is our contract for? Or how long, I'm sorry?
Um, I believe this, uh, contract is for a year, and Mr. Maron, I think, uh, would like to comment.
Hello, Dan Maron, contracts and risk manager, for the record. In this case, since we're using the contract that's established by the City of Las Vegas, we live by their terms. The price is quoted from Thatcher is through June of this year. Uh, we'll look at escalations beyond that. In the case of this particular commodity, it's worth pointing out, um, in the name, it's aluminum, and that currently is getting a lot of volatility in the market due to the various tariffs that have come up on aluminum, so, um, we were happy to lock in the price we could.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lawson?
So, Dan, this is a, a lower price than we would have gotten originally?
Yes, sir, um, using the joint provision in a case like this, um, while City of Las Vegas was the source agency, um, it's one that's marketed as a national contract, and so, we're exercising or getting benefits of volume that we wouldn't get on our own, um, just on the volume that we get at the plant.
We're currently using Thatcher anyway.
Correct, Thatcher is the incumbent.
They've got a better price by using Vegas, I love it.
Correct.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, looking for a motion? Okay, Mr. Lawson?
I moved to approve the, uh, purchase of aluminum sulfate from Thatcher Chemical Company at a unit price of $375 per ton, using the joint provision of the City of Las Vegas.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second, Mr. Abbott?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Are you going to do nine point eight?
I'm up next.
Okay, consideration, discussion, and possible approval to purchase methanol from Thatcher Chemical Company at the markup rate of 6.382 cents a gallon, um, using the joint provision of City of Las Vegas, contract is estimated in annual cost of $1,900,000. It's a lot of methanol.
A lot of methanol. But it goes for a good cost. Um, good afternoon, Mayor, city council members, uh, Kim Labor, Maintenance Manager, Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. Um, item nine point eight is a request for the city council to approve the purchase of methanol from Thatcher Chemical at a markup rate of .6382 cents per gallon. This is on top of the market cost, rail, and trucking costs. The estimated annual cost is projected to be $1,900,000. Tamworth has seen the cost vary in the last two years between $1.48 and $1.89. Um, methanol is used part of the, um, denitification process, uh, process at Tamworth. This is, uh, a process where we remove nitrogen from the wastewater. This is part of our discharge permit with the EPA, and, um, this is something that, um, is critical to meeting the, uh, discharge permit. Once again, we are using a joiner contract with, per the N R S, which allows us to utilize the same contract price that Thatcher Chemical bid to the City of Las Vegas. Um, Spark's share of the $1,900,000 is approximately $600,000, and with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, questions or comments for Kim? Mr. Dare?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I moved to approve the purchase of methanol from Thatcher Chemical Company at the markup rate of .6382 dollars per gallon, using the joint provision of the City of Las Vegas, National IPA Contract Number One, Five, Zero, Zero, Six, Three, dash, S K dash A, with an estimated annual cost of $1,900,000.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second, Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, Councilman.
Okay. Nine point nine. Presentation, discussion, and possible approval of a complement change in community services with fiscal impact for FY nineteen, estimated $11,000 in the sewer fund. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Smith and council members. Jill Valdez, Human Resource Analyst, for the record. Before you today is a recommended complement change. Community Services requests that the G T Specialist Two position be upgraded to a System Analyst Senior G I S position. The change is requested because an analyst can address complex situations, they can perform data modeling, and they do high-level computer programming that the department needs the most. The G T Specialist job duties don't encompass this level of work. When Community Services has staff to perform at this higher level, it leads to efficiencies, provides critical information to decision-makers, and results in improved, uh, projects throughout the city. The project, the projected cost of this change is $11,000 in fiscal year nineteen. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions or comments? Seeing none, looking for a motion? Mr. Abbott?
Yep, um, I moved to approve the personnel complement change to remove the Geographic Technology Specialist Two G I S and replace the position with a Systems Analyst Senior G I S position in the Community Services Department.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second, Mr. Dare?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? And that position is currently open. Is that right?
That is correct, it's vacant.
Okay.
And we hope to, uh, open that and...
Get it filled?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, uh, any, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, nine point ten. Consideration of possible approval of a tentative map request for a hundred and sixty-nine lot single-family residential subdivision on 21.75 acres of a 37.41 acre parcel in the N U D. Doctor!
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jonathan Cummins Planner. Uh, P C N eighteen dash zero, zero, four, nine is a tentative map request for a hundred and sixty-nine lot, single-family residential subdivision on a 21.75 acre site in the Kylie Ranch North Phase Six Plan Development. Property is on the northeast corner of Henry Orr Parkway and Kylie Parkway, outlined in cyan.
What? Did you say cyan?
Yes, sir.
Slowly, I turned.
It's the official color of the planning department.
Thank you.
We found that out.
Got a flag made out of cyan.
Yeah. The Kylie Ranch North Phase Six Plan Development Handbook was approved by city council in 2014, and at its October fourth meeting, the Sparks Planning Commission found the proposed tentative map to be compatible with, uh, recently approved subdivisions in the Kylie, Kylie Ranch North Phase Six as well. The 169 lots range in size from 3,400 square feet to just over 8,100 square feet, with a density of 7.77 dwelling units per acre. The Kylie Ranch North Phase Six Handbook requires a density of six to 11.9 dwelling units per acre in its mixed residential, or, excuse me, medium residential land use. With that said, the Planning Commission made the following twelve required findings for a tentative map. Finding T one requires conformance with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. Goals and policies relevant to this tentative map are goal C F one, that the city be able to provide acceptable service levels to the site; policy H one, that sufficient zoning and infrastructure exist for the production of new housing in the city; policy H two, that varieties of housing types exist to expand choices available to the city's diverse population; policy C C eight, that neighborhood diversity exists with varying lot sizes in new subdivisions; and policy C four, that pedestrian networks exist within new housing developments in the city. Finding T two requires conformity with the city's street master plan. The Planning Commission determined that the proposed tentative map does in fact conform with that, with that required finding, as well as T three, which requires conformance with environmental health laws. The Planning Commission determined that it met both of those requirements. Finding T four requires the availability of water. The applicant has determined the need for 50.57 acre feet per wat-, of water per year, which would be required, excuse me, provided by the Truckee Meadows Water Authority, and water rights are in place. Finding T five requires the availability of and access to utilities. Developer has estimated that the development will generate 164,775 gallons of sewage per day. Developer would provide documentation of adequate sewer capacity prior to the recordation of a final map. Additionally, stormwater and drainage plans will be reviewed by the city engineer prior to that time as well. Finding T six requires the availability of public services such as schools, police, and transportation. Washoe County School District estimates that the subdivision will bring thirty-eight new students to Hall Elementary, eight new students to Shaw Middle, and sixteen new students to Spanish Springs High School. Additionally, the Sky Ranch Middle School is under construction and will alleviate any potential for future overcrowding. Sparks Police will provide service to the site, and R T C has provided guidelines for access and levels of service to be met by the developer. Finding T seven addresses the effects of the proposed subdivision on public streets and highways. Planning Commission has determined that the volume of new traffic can be served by existing roads and highways in the city. Finding T eight addresses the physical characteristics of the land, such as floodplain, slope, and soil. The developer will be required to provide hydrological and geotechnical reports prior to the recordation of a final map to address those details. Finding T nine requires that staff consider the comments of outside agencies. Staff only received those, uh, requested comments from the school district and R T C. Finding T ten is specific to fire protection. The site is to be served by the Sparks Fire Department and the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, uh, through mutual aid agreement, since the site lies just outside the six-minute response time for the City of Sparks Fire Department. Finding T eleven requires that staff address any other impacts. Staff, staff finds that the tentative map is compatible with previous subdivisions in Kylie North, uh, and has conditioned that common areas will be maintained by an H O A or equivalent, um, and that land, final landscape plans be approved prior to the final map. Finding T twelve requires public notice be given for the item. The posting agendas for the city council meeting function is that notice. Uh, with that, Planning Commission is record, forwarding a recommendation of approval to the city council, and I will be glad to take questions.
Okay, questions or comments? Seeing none? Looking for a motion, Mr. Dare?
I moved to approve the tentative map request for 169 lot, single-family residential subdivision on 21.75 acres of 37.41 acre parcel in the N U D, New Auburn District, Kylie Ranch North Phase Six, zoning district located at the northeast corner of Kylie Parkway and Henry Orr Parkway, Sparks, Nevada.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second, Ms. Bybee?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. So we have three to one, Mr. Lawson is a no, passes. Three to one. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to number ten. Public hearing and action items unrelated to planning and zoning. And I'm not going to read this whole deal, but it's second reading. Public hearing, discussion, and possible adoption of Bill Number Twenty-seven fifty, in order in submitting Title fifteen of the Sparks Municipal Code and adopting in 2018 additions, additions of the International Building Code. You know, Mark, this is public comment, and this is going to be a pretty long presentation. Yes?
I'm, I'm going to try to speed it up as soon as, as much as I can.
Okay, why don't we do the public comment first?
Okay.
And that way, we can, uh... I'll open a public comment period, I do have one card. Uh, Jim Myers? Going down, Jim. Welcome.
Hi. Uh, Jim Myers, excuse me, with the Southwest Energy Efficiency Project. Um, we have participated with the Northern Nevada I C C chapters in their development of the 2018 I codes, international codes for the International Code Council. Um, we've been very active. My focus has been on the energy code and the residential code, somewhat on the mechanical code. I just wanted to share that, um, the codes seem a little weedy if you don't work in the codes every day, and, and that's not, uh, your, your focus, but they do work together. They are an integrated set of codes, and it's best if the codes could be adopted together with minimal, um, minimal changes and amendments. And the Northern Nevada I C C chapter, of which Mark was leading that effort, was very instrumental to make sure that all the codes were, um, retained that, that integrity as they were amended, um, individually, and I just want to, uh, suggest that you support Mark and, uh, his proposal of the codes and amendments.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Mark, come on up.
Um, thank you, and good afternoon, Mayor Smith and council members. Appreciate it. So, uh, this, uh, is to update our codes to current 2018 codes, and, uh, so, we'll start off with, uh, part of the background of what the codes are. The codes are published by the International Code Council and are the prominent building code used throughout the United States. They're updated on three-year cycles. Uh, the, all these codes, the International Building Code, the International Residential Code, International Mechanical Code, Uniform Mechanical Code, Uniform Plumbing Code, International Fuel and Gas Code, International Energy Conservation Code, International Existing Building Code, International Wildland Urban Interface Code, the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, and the National Electrical Code will be updated to the current codes. Um, building codes are established minimum standard safeguards for life and public welfare by regulating and controlling the design, construction, and installation of new buildings, and alterations to the existing buildings. Adoption, update, adopting updated building codes enables the City of Sparks to address all aspects of safe and sound construction, such as structural integrity, plumbing, electrical, and mechanical systems, and energy efficiency and sustainability. We are currently using the 2012 codes and amendments. Since 2006, building officials in Northern Nevada have worked together for consistency in the way building codes are adopted and, and interpreted. Uh, we recently completed a year-long process to develop the 2018 Northern Nevada Amendments to the International Code. Over sixty people participated from the building industry and nine jurisdictions. An oversight steering committee was established, and seven technical committees developed for, uh, for these, for these amendments. So, uh, if you would, if anyone would like to go and, uh, review any of the agendas or meetings, uh, or minutes of meetings, uh, they're allowed to do so through our Northern Nevada I C C, uh, chapter. Uh, calendars include the dates, agendas, minutes, and committee meetings. Uh, Northern Nevada Juris- Northern Nevada jurisdictions may adopt or adapt the amendment packages that they see fit. Some of the highlights of the code changes that are coming up are, there's a 15% reduction in the basic wind speed design calculations. The amendments establish seismic zones, frost protection depths, and snow load requirements based on the conditions in Northern Nevada. Recently, legislative body passed a baby-changing requirement, baby-changing table requirement for all new buildings and tenant improvements for public restrooms. Fire sprinklers are not required in residences of less than 5,000 square feet. Increases to the Energy Conservation Code standards make buildings more energy efficient and reduce operating costs. Arc fault or ground fault protection at plugs throughout the house, which protect us against shock and fire. The new, there are also some new code provisions for podium-style construction used for apartments similar to what we have in downtown Sparks right now. Make it a little easier for us to develop those. During the end, at the end of the amendment process, BAN submitted some amendments to the International Energy Conservation Code. These changes would have reduced insulation requirements to 2009 levels when renewable energy such as solar are used. National and local energy code experts and the International Energy Conservation Code Technical Committee does not support reducing these thermal insulation standards. Similar changes were not adopted in the IEEC or by Southern Nevada. Northern Nevada Oversight Steering Committee did not include these changes in the 2018 Northern Nevada Amendments. So the implementation timelines, if the City of Sparks Council approves these ordinance to adopt the 2018 building codes with the Northern Nevada Amendments, a grace period will start. During that grace period, applicants will be able to, applications will be accepted using either the 2012 or the 2018 codes. The grace period will last until July 1st, 2019. After that date, only applications using the 2018 codes will be accepted. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions or comments for Mark? Ms. Bybee.
Mark, I do have a question on the, you mentioned that BAN had proposed an amendment. Is that included in the Northern Nevada Amendments? Or where is that in? So I'm looking at the motions that we're considering of accepting these new codes and the Northern Nevada Amendments. Is that included in that, or that would be a separate action on the BAN proposals?
Councilwoman Bybee, the, we did not accept those amendments, and they were not voted through into that Northern Nevada Amendment Package, so they're not part of it. I just wanted to kind of bring clarity to, you know, what we were looking at as far as when they submitted those and why we turned them down.
Okay. And I support that, but I wanted to make sure what we were voting on.
Right.
Whether that included it or not, but if it was not included, then thank you. That's all I need.
Right, they're not included in the amendment package.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, looking for a motion. We did it, we did it first.
You already.
Yeah, we did it on that one. Mr.
I was here.
Yeah, I know you were here.
I just wasn't paying attention.
Mr. Abbott.
Yeah, I'll take that motion. I move to adopt Bill Number 2750 in ordinance submitting Title 15 of the Sparks Municipal Code and adopting the 2018 additions of the IPC, the IRC, the IMC, the UMC, the UPC, the IFGC, the IECC, the IEBC, the IWIC, the ISP, and SPA Code, 2017 NEC, and the 2018 NNA. What'd I miss? Amendments, each of which are to become effectively July 1st, 2019. Appreviations.
Okay. Okay, we have motion, looking for a second, Mr. Dare.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Mark. We're going to see this again in three years or six years?
Six years. We do these on every six years.
Okay.
So thank you, everyone, for your support. I appreciate it.
Thanks for all your hard work. Okay, 10.2, second reading, Public Hearing Discussion and Possible Adoption of Bill Number 2751 in order in submitting Chapter 14 of the Sparks Municipal Code and adopting 2018 International Fire Code, International Wild Urban Interface Code, and the 2018 Northern Nevada Fire Amendments, each of which are to become effective July 1st, 2019. Bob, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Smith and members of council. Congratulations on your appointments. It's Bob King, Fire Marshal for record. Very similar to what you just heard. Just like to read a little background about the fire codes. The international codes are predominant fire codes used throughout the nation. On a three-year cycle, they are updated and published by the International Code Council. The purpose of this code is to establish the minimum requirements consistent with nationally-recognized good practice, providing a reasonable level of life, safety, and property protection from the hazards of fire, explosion, and dangerous conditions in new and existing buildings, structures, and premises, as well as providing safety to firefighters and emergency responders during emergency operations. The city has adopted this code periodically with a certain modified or amended provision specific to the City of Sparks. Adopting the updated 2018 version of the International Fire Code and the International Wildland Urban Interface Code will assure the city is kept current in the most up-to-date fire safety regulations. Additionally, the fire officials of Northern Nevada wanted to bring a more consistent approach to the way fire codes are adopted and interpreted. Steering and technical committees were formed to develop the 2018 Northern Nevada Fire Amendments to the international codes. These committees consisted of representatives from fire organizations and code officials throughout Northern Nevada. There were 12 different jurisdictions on this committee. Therefore, this ordinance will have the effect of adopting the most recent versions of the international codes as outlined in the ordinance, as well as the 2018 Northern Nevada Fire Amendments to various codes. So with that, I would answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, this is a public hearing, and I'll open up the public hearing. Everybody?
I'm sorry, I'm getting next.
Okay. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the... Where are we? The council. Mr. Dare.
My question, and is there any large cost that we need to be aware of? And some of this, anything changed drastically that was ended up being a cost factor on some of your shifting from the old to the new that would be pointed out by you?
No, we did not find anything that would be a major cost factor on this one. In fact, the majority of the items that were in our Sparks Municipal Code Title 14 are now implemented in the new 2018 Fire Code. Since it went from 2012 to 18, most of those items are now just code language in the 18 Code.
And then is there also a grace period similar to what we're doing up here? Or do you have a hard start, hard end? How does that?
Yes, sir. We're following the same format as the building code.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Lawson.
I have a question on, let me find it. I've read this thing, it's hard to remember where I was. 105.3, Alternative Material Design and Methods. We've taken out the, looks like the second sentence. An alternative material designer method shall be approved where it strikes out the building official in concurrence with the fire chief finds the proposed design satisfactory. Any reason why we struck out business or building officials and left it in solely in the hands of the fire chief?
That was 105?
105.3, second sentence. And then the, there's one on the bottom of that. Did the same thing. We struck building official and put fire chief.
I do not have a copy of that, that strikeout on there. I would just expect that that was something that we decided as a committee, that the majority of the alternative materials and methods would be fire code-related or fire protection-related items. Probably why we did that, but I could get a more pertinent answer.
I think for me, that's kind of important, that we keep the building department involved with the fire department in, for design in the future or whatnot. You make a change in the fire department, we don't catch up with it on the building side, and we have this constant butting of heads that we seem to have in here in Sparks. So for me, I'm not really a big fan of the taking the building official out of the loop and making it strictly the fire chief.
Okay, questions or comments? Is that a stopper? Do we?
Mr. Riscle.
Mr. Riscle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. A little bit of a clarification, based on Mr. Lawson's comments, there has been some difficulty in the past where we have made some changes to the codes as they were approved on this every six-year cycle. We do life safety immediately. There are the things that we have done over time to where there are kind of notes in the margin, if you will, kind of how you and I have talked about that amongst ourselves. What the building official and the fire marshal are now doing under my direction is that any change to the code will have to go through the same process that the code goes through. So it means that we will be talking to stakeholder groups to make sure they understand what's going on. They will know when a starting date will take place, if it's not something that can wait until the next cycle. Therefore, we won't have cross purposes in between different documents that will have a controlling document. So this, what we're doing today with both the international codes and the fire codes is creating kind of ground zero. And then as we go forward, changes will have to follow a methodic process, so we do not run into bifurcated code as we have in the past where one side didn't know what the other side was doing. Therefore, we have, designers can design to meet the code as it's appropriate, and as change is needed and mandated, everyone will know at the same time. So kind of two things happening from there.
If we approve this today, then the fire chief has to say so on alternative materials.
That's the way it's written today, and we can take a look at it if you want to do it that way, but I think that's one of those with the building materials, your building official and your fire department talk on those things all the time. And at the end of the day, understanding the most recent fire science is very important as it relates to those alternatives. So I was comfortable in the language at that point. If you, if the council wants to direct something else, we'll certainly look at it.
Mr. Dare.
Well, because I want to point out what Ed's saying, and I get what you're saying, but this is saying something different. This says that, I mean, let's just say in 20 years from now, five years from now, we have maybe a different fire chief, whoever, so we're not talking about you or whoever. But they make a decision. It says here that they don't have to talk to the building official. So is it, is that a problem? I mean, is that, do you get what, on here, it says, you're saying one thing, but I'm saying, what it's saying, what it reads right here is saying that you're taking that person out of the loop, and that they have the freedom to go make that decision without the fire, building official. Am I right?
That's what I understand.
That's what I read.
Chief.
Hi, sir.
Could you read the section that you're concerned about, please?
105.3.
On the Northern Nevada Amendments?
Wildland Fire, Wildland Urban Interface Code Amendments.
Okay, well, this is specifically related to something that I believe is under the purview of the fire chief, not the building official. This is the Wildland Urban Interface Code requirements. So in my opinion, it would be most appropriate that the fire chief is the one making a determination on that. It may be in conjunction with the building official, but it should be the fire chief or the fire code officials call.
So you can make that decision unilaterally?
I believe that would be under my authority.
If I'm a designer working in Sparks, then, and I don't know what that decision is, I go back to, oh, our chief says this the way it is, so that's what I got to do.
Yeah, I believe that would be my area of expertise as the fire chief or the fire marshal to make a decision that has an effect on life safety and fire protection.
I guess my part of it is the communication between the two, the building officials and the fire officials having the same communication, so we're all on the same page, and we don't get into this, oh, we changed this, because I have the purview with, unilaterally, to do whatever I want. I prefer to have some checks and balances, I guess.
Well, I believe the city manager has set up a process for that to occur in the future, so that we are on the same page when we come to these code interpretations.
I'm just reading through what I've got. I'm not aware of what the city manager said.
And I'm just trying to...
I understand.
Give you my opinion on it, and maybe put you at ease a little bit, okay?
Okay, any other questions or comments? Mr. Dare.
I have a question for the chief. So with that said, I hear what you're saying, and I can see your point of view for sure, but why was this in there in the beginning, then? Why did they ever have the building there if that's true? Because I don't question respect of what you guys do, but there was a reason this was in here, and now it's, we're taking it out. I just, I just want to understand, do you have any idea why it was in there?
I don't.
Okay, fair enough. Maybe that's why you struck it. So then my final question, probably back to city manager, with what you said, taking this out, does it still keep in place the things that you have requested? Does this not?
Yes, there's, just to be, a little bit of background, as the manager, I can't direct how particular individuals respond to the code and manage to the code, but I can direct how we do things operationally internally. So my direction, which is new direction, it's never happened before, and it's because of this process, is that things like this where there's consultation, they get to drive the code the way they want to. They're the experts. However, my direction is, is once this code's in place, it was put in place via a process. You had all the different codes and all the different people in the stakeholders groups, and we had conversations. People applied for amendments. They were either accepted or rejected. From this point forward, if you were to approve this today, to go make that change which had been in the past, kind of in the margin, those don't get to be in the margin anymore. The code's the code until it's officially changed. That means the stakeholders have been talked to, and that we, the change process now has no one in surprise at what's going on, and we don't just unilaterally get to go do something. If we feel there's a life safety issue, we're going to respond very quickly, and we may not necessarily involve stakeholders. If there's not life safety, then the direction from the manager's office is that we'll have change management, it will go through the stakeholders, and it'll have an approval process which ends up coming to this body down the road for official change of those amendments.
That answer question?
No, but I'm okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? We've already had public hearings, so looking for a motion. Sometime today. Mr. Lawson.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the code, but I want to add back in building official in concurrence with fire chief. And same at the next line down.
Chad, are we okay on that?
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second. Mr. Dare.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and the motion is to accept this...
Code as amended with those two small changes in Section 105.3.
To add back in the building inspector.
Building official in concurrence with, and building official and fire chief.
Okay, everybody understand the motion? Please vote. Passes unanimously. So you have the direction, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to 11, Planning and Zoning Public Hearings and Action Items, second reading. Public Hearing Discussion and Possible Adoption of Bill Number 2748 in ordinance for approval of a development agreement by and between the City of Sparks, the foothills of Wingfield LLC, and Albert De Sino Construction Company concerning the development of real property 65 acres in size located east of Golden Eagle Regional Park and south Vista Boulevard. Armando.
Good afternoon, Mayor Smith and members of the City Council. I'm Armando Ornelas, the Assistant Community Services Director. This agenda item is for a proposed development agreement for the development of three parcels totaling 65 acres located, and you can see on the overhead, it's located east of Golden Eagle Regional Park. It's south of Vista Boulevard, which is up here on the, to the upper corner of the screen, and the three parcels are outlined in cyan in, here on, it's two... And the, the three parcels are outlined in cyan in, in, here on the, it's two parcels that are two and a half acres each and the 60 acres, which is the large parcel. So access to the site is currently via a BLM easement that starts at the intersection of Vista Boulevard, so it's essentially the red line on this diagram, this exhibit. It comes in along Home Run Drive, then via Touchdown Drive, and then skirts the northern boundary of the GERP parcel, and then comes south along the eastern boundary of the GERP parcel to the, to the parcel, to the site. The parties to the development agreement are the City of Sparks, the Foothills at Wingfield LLC, which is the property owner, and the Albert D. Sino Construction Company, which is the developer. This agreement is coming forward for city council consideration in conjunction with two related requests that senior planner Eden Critten will present for certification of a comprehensive plan amendment to change multiple land use designations for the site to intermediate density residential and rezoning of the subject property from an agricultural designation of A5 to SF6, which stands for single-family 6,000 square foot lots. The point of bundling the agreement with the comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning requests is to provide the public, third-party reviewing agencies, the planning commission and the city council with an understanding of what the proposed project is at the time these requests are being considered. And equally important, the agreement allows for the city to attach conditions to these prospective approvals. The development agreement also underlies several of the findings that the planning commission made regarding the comprehensive plan and rezoning requests, and in particular serves as the basis for satisfying the regional plan's concurrency requirements for infrastructure and public services. With that information as background, here's what the proposed development agreement covers. Permitted uses and density are addressed in section 3.1 of the agreement. It specifies that between 420 and 475 residential units are permitted and single-family detached and attached units are allowed. Section 3.2 requires the developer to provide documentation of its legal right for the uses and densities contemplated by the proposed agreement. So what's significant about that particular provision is that the, what was contemplated when the easement was originally granted was development of much larger homesites. And so, you know, we want, the city wants that the BLM expressly allow for access to this site for the number of homes that's current, currently contemplated. Required infrastructure improvements are addressed in section 3.1. I'm sorry, 3.3. This includes the off-site infrastructure, which is, is to be at the developer's expense necessary for the proposed project. The required improvements include the following. So, let me go to this exhibit. Okay, so... I'm going to actually rotate it again because...
On the top.
Yeah. Okay, there we have it now. So we have north on the, on the, on the top. And the, the agreement requires that the developer do all sanitary sewer upgrades that are necessary to accommodate the project. And then in terms of street improvements, there, we are requiring a secondary all-weather fire apparatus access road prior to the storage of any combustible materials on the site. This secondary access is to be privately maintained. So if you come in here, just north of the entrance to the site, immediately north of the fire station, here is the secondary access road along the edge, northern edge of the site, and then here. So here's the, you can see the, the layout for the proposed streets, and this would be emergency access for our vehicles and potentially in the event of wildfire condition, for example, would allow for the subdivision to evacuate as well. Prior to the, prior to final inspection of the 76th dwelling unit, the intersection of Vista Boulevard and Home Run Drive, which is here at the top left-hand, upper-right corner, needs to be improved and in order to, because the, the real issue is going to be exiting the subdivision when you have park traffic in particular. So we're requiring that there be one exclusive left-hand turn, one turn that could be either a left-hand turn or, or straight through, and then one exclusive right-hand turn. And so those improvements will have to be done again before the 76th home is, is ready for occupancy. Another condition of the development agreement is that all of these streets from Vista Boulevard to the site have to be built to city standards, so this will be the primary access here. And I believe they are calling that Scorpius. The developer shall be responsible for maintaining all of the streets from Vista Boulevard to the site during construction. So city staff were concerned about damage to the roads. There's going to be obviously heavy, heavy truck traffic during the construction period, and obviously it's critical to the city that access to the, to the park be maintained and that those roads remain in condition that we can handle all of the traffic. There's going to have to be some stop controls installed at this intersection here. And then the schedule for construction needs to be coordinated with the parks department and the community services department in order to try to avoid the largest events and so we're not creating further bottlenecks during, during our largest events. All of the internal streets inside the sub, proposed subdivision are to be privately owned and maintained. That's one of the conditions of the development agreement and one of the, the premises of the fiscal impact analysis that was prepared for the project. We do want to have pedestrian and bicycle access between the subdivision and, and the park itself. It'll be controlled. Obviously, we will not be allowing for vehicular access from the subdivision directly into the park here. The development agreement in section 3.3 requires that a 25-foot landscape strip be established along the western border of the project, would be the eastern border of GERP, if you will, to help screen the homes from GERP's lights. So the, the landscaping plan needs to include plant materials, tree materials that would, that would accomplish that. Section 4 permits the city council to review the developer's compliance with the terms of the development agreement after 12 months and then a progress report every 20, 24 months after that. And then section 6.1 specifies the duration of the agreement, which is 10 years. The agreement grants the developer the right to request one five-year extension subject to certain conditions. So the planning commission reviewed the development agreement for consistency with the comprehensive plan. They found it consistent with the comprehensive plan and they recommend that the city council approve the agreement. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, questions or comments? Chief.
Yep, Chris Maples, fire chief of the City of Sparks. I just want to make, it's not a big deal, but I want to make something, I want to clarify something Armando said. The secondary fire access road is not designed to be an evacuation route for the residents of the subdivision. It is only designed to provide access for fire department vehicles to get into it. Having said that, if something bad happens, they'll, they'll take whatever route out of the subdivision they need to, as I would.
Okay.
I just want to make sure we're clear on that. That's not what it's designed for.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, Mr. Abbott.
Yeah, on the sanitary or the sewer study?
Yes.
There was something about, we'll need to rebuild the lift station. Is that for us or is that developer?
That will be the developer's responsibility.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? This is a public hearing item. I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time? If none, we'll bring it back to the council. Ms. Bybee.
I'm ready to make a motion if you're ready, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt bill number 2748, an ordinance for approval of a development agreement by and between the City of Sparks, the Foothills at Wingfield LLC and Albert D. Sino Construction Company concerning the development of real property 65 acres in size located east of Golden Eagle Regional Park and south of Vista Boulevard, Sparks, Nevada.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Abbott.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Armando.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Okay, 11.2. Public hearing discussion, a possible certification of a comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use designations on a site approximately 65 acres in size located east of Golden Eagle Regional Park and south of Vista Boulevard, Sparks, Nevada, from 6.26 acres of commercial, 15.57 acres of multifamily residential, 18.56 acres of high-density residential, 8.12 acres of open space, five acres of large lot residential, and 11.4 acres of mixed use to approximately 65 acres of intermediate density. Go, Ian.
Mayor Smith, members of the city council, Ian Critten, senior planner. So I'm going to go through this stuff again. You, you've heard it, but we're going to go through it one more time. We'll try to be quick, but we do need to kind of go through and be thorough on, on a lot of this. As Armando stated, this area is located east of Golden Eagle Regional Park. I saw him struggle a little bit to not say GERP, which is what we usually call it, but I, I may slip into that, so bear with me. So yes, just east of Golden Eagle Regional Park is a 60-acre parcel and two, two and a half acre parcels. The 60-acre parcel has one agricultural building on it. There's a vacant, a single-family house on the, one of the two and a half acres plus a bunch of owl buildings. All of that current development will go away with any future development on the site. As Armando went over as well, there is the current access route to the site. Goes, as he said, from Vista down Home Run onto Touchdown. And then currently it runs along this unnamed access road that goes through the, the city maintenance yard and then down onto the property. That relocation will have to happen through the, the tenant mapping process and so forth. We'll relocate that exactly where it's going to fall long-term. We don't have an exact location of that at this time, but the development agreement and our discussion with the BLM has got us to the point where we know that we will have a, an access route and we feel comfortable with the, the specifics that are contained in the, the development agreement that require that that happen. That's part of why, as Armando mentioned, the development agreement was so important. There's currently not access to a city street to, on this parcel, and there's also not access to some of the other city services. And so that development agreement was required to meet the concurrency findings that he mentioned, that I'll go into in some more depth. As was stated, this, the current land use plan for this site has a lot of land uses on it. As mentioned, there are open space, commercial, multifamily or MF24, high-density residential, large lot residential, and mixed use. Those were all designated in 2007 as part of a, a plan that was moving forward. There was a subsequent to that, a handbook that was initially, that was initiated, but it was never actually formally submitted or approved. And so the zoning never changed, but the, the land use did in, in, in hopes of a handbook kind of addressing those, those additional changes, but that did not happen. The, actually, the last, these two lots to the south here were annexed in 2015 and they were given a, an A5 zoning designation at that time. As mentioned, this, they are requesting to change this multitude of land uses to IDR, which is intermediate density residential. And then ultimately, they're also requesting a change to SF6 zoning. So at the August 2nd meeting, the planning commission did approve the comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use, then, land use designation to IDR. And then on October 10th, the regional planning commission held a public hearing and reviewed the requested comprehensive plan amendment, and the regional planning commission determined that the comprehensive plan amendment conformed to the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. So the existing land use designations allow for more intense development than the proposed land use designation. The existing land use would permit, permit commercial zoning as, and uses as, commercial zoning and uses as well as residential development with permitted densities in excess of 24 units per acre. In comparison, the Foothills to the north have a comprehensive land use designation of low-density residential, which allows three to six dwelling units per acre. And the proposed or the requested land use designation of IDR would permit densities of six to 10 units per acre. And then just as a comparison as well, the unincorporated county parcels to the south have a maximum density of three units per acre.
Ask a question. Ian, does the Hansberry Road connect with the unspecified road? The one that comes along those two, those county parcels?
So, so this unspecified road that comes up here and then comes down the side, and then it connects to the Hansberry Road? Yeah, there's a, that is, and I might get the name of this wrong, but it's a Tamwa access road to the Water Loop we put in when we did Golden Eagle.
Residents have access to that road?
They do right now.
Residents in the new parcel?
No, they, the...
So there will only be one way in and one way out?
That, that is the discussion right now with some potential for, for gating some stuff.
Those connected or not, so you can have another way out.
Okay, so the Golden Eagle Recreational or Regional Park has a land use designation of community facilities, and the community facilities designation is generally compatible with the IDR or the intermediate density land use, as housing and parks are compatible or complementary uses. As a regional park though, GERP does have perhaps less complementary, as it's, is less complementary, it has later hours, more lights, and has, and produces more noise than a neighborhood or community park would. For these reasons, staff has included a requirement for a landscape buffer in the proposed development agreement or in the approved development agreement. Now, to mitigate those compatibility issues, to, to the extent possible, obviously we know they're very close to a very bright, very loud park, but we've done what we can to try to create some sort of a landscaping buffer that will try to mitigate what, what we can. Additionally, the development agreement requires to develop pedestrian and bicycle connections between the proposed development and, and the Golden Eagle Regional Park in order to offset some of those more impactful aspects of the park by providing convenient park access to future residents and the proposed development. Essentially, the thought being if you're going to have to live that close to the park, you better be able to use it real easily by, by foot and by bike. You should have good access. So there are four findings associated with a concrete, or a comprehensive plan amendment. First is CP1, that the proposed comprehensive plan amendment would be in conformance of the regional plan, land use and intensity designations. We felt that the, the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan goals and policies relevant to this project were goal 1.1, that between 20, 2007 and 2030, at least 99% of the region's population growth, 99% of the region's job growth be located in the Truckee Meadows service areas, the TMSAs, and the subject property is within the City of Sparks portion of the TMSA. Also, goal 3.5 of the regional plan is that the regional plan will coordinate the master plans, facility plans, and other similar plans of local governments and affected entities to ensure that necessary public facilities and services to support new development are or will be available and adequate at the time the impact of new development occur. Regionally, goal 3.5 has been interpreted to mean that the necessary public facilities and services must be in place or that there must be a plan and a funding mechanism to provide them concurrently with new development. And the City of Sparks has generally sought to provide for concurrency with entitlements such as land use and zoning approvals as they're granted. Additionally, a fiscal impact analysis submitted by the applicant indicates that the intra, they, they intend to build, developing the project with approximately 450 single-family lots. To date, no city services, infrastructure or services have been extended to serve the property. Section 3.3 of the development agreement requires the developer to construct all sanitary sewer conveyance upgrades that are necessary based on the increased flows resulting from the proposed development and provided the development agree, or, okay, so we did approve the development agreement. Second is finding CP2, is that the comprehensive plan amendment would implement the goals listed within the Sparks comprehensive plan. Those goals are policy, or goals and policy are policy MG5, which requires on properties over five acres that we look at fiscal impacts. Policy CF1, that when we're reviewing new... Policy CF1, that when we're reviewing new development, that we can show that city services can be provided at appropriate levels. And goal H2, which is to promote a strong, diverse housing market that supports economic growth and vitality while ensuring environmental and fiscal sustainability. So, under Policy MG5, review of the comprehensive plan amendments required a fiscal impact analysis. The applicant submitted a fiscal impact analysis that showed, assuming that all the roads were privately maintained, that they would have a funding, generate a road fund surplus of 1.4 million dollars. And combining the net positive general fund amount of 1.45 million and the net positive road fund amount of 1.4 million produces a project positive fiscal impact of approximately 2.8 million dollars over a twenty-year analysis period. The development agreement also requires the intersection improvements that Armando mentioned here at Home Run. This is Home Run, Vista, and I can't remember if it's Scorpio or Scipio. Scorpio. Across the street, basically, where Home Run crosses, Vista turns into Scorpio. There'll be required left-hand turn improvements as well as right-hand turn coming off of that. But also, there'll be improvements required to the existing west approach. So as you approach Home Run on Vista, there'll be, have to lengthen the approved, existing right turn lane at the west approach of the intersection shall be lengthened to provide a minimum of four hundred and sixty-five feet of storage and deceleration length with a hundred and eighty-foot taper. So they're gonna drastically increase that so that we don't have stacking on Vista as people are trying to turn in and get home if there's an event as well. So they increased that dramatically.
Ian?
Yes.
I do have a question while we're talking about the road improvements. So I'm trying to be clear on the improvements are at the intersection of Vista and Home Run or at the intersection, because my concern is also at the intersection of whatever this road's gonna be named coming into Home Run for traffic. And when you have a lot of, a big event, and there's a lot of traffic on Home Run, it's just gonna be a stop sign from the new road. And right away for Home Run, kind of what is, what are we looking at, traffic mitigation at that intersection? Because the rest is all at the Vista intersection, correct?
Correct. So there's a series of different improvements that are gonna be required. The transportation manager here, she may be able to go through them in more detail, but I'll tell you what I know. Yes, there are improvements on Vista getting onto Home Run. There's the extension of that turn lane. Getting from Home Run onto Vista, there's a widening and an extension of turn lanes there. And then they changed the stop control at Home Run and Touchdown, and then at Touchdown and whatever to be named, New Road to go into the development. They, all of those were looked at in the traffic impact analysis that was done. And there was a plan laid out for how they could best address those, all of those different turnings and the traffic going through them. And basically, the requirement is that they make those improvements. The specific improvements to road width and turn lanes and stuff were the ones that we specifically called out in the staff report. We didn't talk about, there'll be stop controls of these, because those are minor improvements in far as implementation versus the widening the road and adding extra turn lanes.
Okay, that's, no, that's all I needed, is what improvements or what was gonna remedy all that traffic coming out of the development onto Home Run, where you've got everyone coming out of GERP at the same time, and how we would, you know, I like the improvements at Vista. We're gonna need those for sure, but there will be the additional traffic bottleneck there at that intersection as well.
Yeah, and the traffic impact analysis was done using the average trips that they felt that would be generated for the development, the proposed development. But also, they used major events at the park to make those other traffic count numbers. So they did look at it in pretty well, pretty good detail to try to figure out how to best move people through theirs. And it's mostly with the stop controls that they have, and then essentially allowing free flow into the park, and then stop controlling on the way out, because stacking on the way out is safer than stacking on the way in.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed.
You know, Ian, my concern is on the way out, possibly give them a free right turn onto Home Run. Because, especially during construction, you're gonna have all those trucks, or you get three or four trucks trying to get out at the same time. It stops everybody.
Sure. That was part of the discussion with the development agreement, that there had to be coordination with parks and with community services in order to address exactly that concern of during construction. And as we move those trucks through, how are we gonna, you know, obviously, when you have construction traffic, there's construction traffic, but what can we do to not essentially close down the park? Because it's such an important part of the city services. But also, so that people that are already using Vista don't get hung up more than is, you know, reasonable during the construction period.
Any other questions at this time? Okay, continue.
Finding CP3 is that the comprehensive plan amendment would be compatible with surrounding land uses. As stated, to the east and to the north is Golden Eagle Regional Park. The north being future field development. The, to the south, we have unincorporated county large lots, large lot residential, agricultural lots. And then to the east, we have BLM land stretching out for a long ways. So as I mentioned earlier, GERP is a very heavily-used regional park, and there are impacts that will have, that it will have on the proposed development. And we've made what efforts we felt we could to try to reduce those impacts as far as the impacts from GERP onto the proposed development. The property to the east shouldn't have any conflicts as it's open space in the BLM. And the biggest potential impact as far as compatibility of adjacent land uses is the residential to the south, although that is residential to residential. And so we don't feel that they'll have, they'll be incompatible, as well as they'd have a separate entrance and exit, so we wouldn't be pushing all of this traffic right across their front yard. And then finally, finding CP4 is addressing public notice. This item was noticed in the agenda, as well as they did have a public neighborhood meeting on April 10th. And there were four people in attendance at that meeting. That concludes my presentation. Planning Commission did approve this and is requesting certification. Our staff's requesting certification of this. I am available for any additional questions you may have.
Okay, questions or comments? Seeing none, this is a public hearing item. Donald, you want to?
Yeah, real quick, sorry, this thing is not working. On the road fund, you said it was, I think, 1.4 million revenue over the twenty years? That's not to us, right? That's to them to maintain their own road?
No, that would be to, I don't know exactly how the road fund works. But that is the road fund, not, that's not, they'll have to generate their own funds to maintain their own roads. That's another requirement of the development agreement is that they figure out how much that's gonna cost, and that they show us how they're gonna assess that and so forth before we start approving tenant maps. But that is a public road fund.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, now I'll open up the public for hearing. Anybody in the audience who wishes to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for action. Ms. Bybee?
Ready to make a motion?
Okay.
Okay, now I am. I moved to certify a comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use designations on a site approximately sixty-five acres in size, located east of Golden Eagle Regional Park and south of Vista Boulevard Sparks, Nevada, from six point two-six acres of commercial, fifteen point five-seven acres of multifamily residential, eighteen point five-six acres of high-density residential, eight point one-two acres of open space, five acres of large residential, and eleven point four acres of mixed use, to approximately sixty-five acres of intermediate-density IDR, based on the findings CP1 through CP4 as set forth in the staff report.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Lawson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes, Ian, answer your thanks. Ian, are you doing 11.3 and 11.4?
No, 11.4 is Karen.
Okay, 11.3, second reading, public hearing discussion and possible adoption of Bill Number 2749 in ordinance to rezone real property approximately sixty-five acres in size and generally located east of Golden Eagle Regional Park and south of Vista Boulevard Sparks, from A5 agriculture to SF-6 single-family 6,000-square-foot lots, PCN 18-0005. You're up.
Mayor Smith, members of the city council, Ian Cretin, senior planner. I will try to be brief but thorough as I go through all of this again. As mentioned, this is a sixty-five acre site. This commission just ratified or certified the land use change on. It was a multiple or a variety of land uses, and now it is IDR. That's important because without that change, the requested zoning wouldn't have been in compliance with the comprehensive plan. We've gone over this. I'm trying to cherry pick out of here what's important and make sure we try to get you out of here by five, if at all possible. So under the existing zoning, this site would only be able to be developed as five-acre lots. But under the amendment and the requested zoning, they are proposing to develop the site with between, in approximately four hundred and fifty lots. So in analysis of the difference between the A5 zoning, which is the existing zoning, and the proposed SF-6 zoning, the short analysis there is there's actually a lot more uses that are permitted under the A5 zoning than there is under the SF-6 zoning that's being requested. Most of those end up being conditional use permit stuff for like bed and breakfasts, and there's a lot of agricultural uses that would no longer be permitted. That is in the staff report, and we can go over it in more detail if you have any questions specifically to it. But barring those, I'm gonna move into the findings required for the zoning as those are the operative things at this point. We've gone over the history and so forth, the background, a couple of times now. So zoning, or finding Z1 for the rezoning is that the project as submitted and conditioned is consistent with the Sparks Comprehensive Plan. Those findings are the same that we talked about with the comprehensive plan. They are Policy MG5, that in reviewing comprehensive plan amendments over five acres, that we look at a fiscal impact analysis. That Policy CF1, that city services be able to be provided at acceptable levels. And goal H2, that this will provide diverse housing that supports economic growth. As mentioned, the fiscal impact analysis does come back positive for this proposed change to approximately 2.8 million dollars over the twenty-year analysis period. They would, the requirements of the comprehensive plan also meet those concurrency requirements with improvements to the sewer and the improvements to the road and access being accomplished through that development agreement, whereas you could normally condition those kind of things with a zoning change. Finding Z2 is the projects consistent with the existing land uses. As mentioned before, we have, here's the existing zoning, sorry, at A5 and the proposed zoning at SF-6. So we can see again that this is the park to the west. The compatibility issue is being addressed through the proposed landscape buffer to reduce light and sound to what degree is possible. Compatibility to the east is not an issue with it being vacant BLM, and then it's residential to residential on the south side with the unincorporated large lot residential. And then finally, finding Z3 requires proper notice. Public notice was given as required. The notice require, I mean, as a minimum, that all property owners within 750 feet of the subject properties be noticed. It's actually quite a bit further than that to get to the required thirty. We actually notified 93 property owners, and those were mailed out. And we ran the, published the, public notice was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on July 20, 2018. And then Planning Commission and City Council function as the hearings for this item. That's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, I am here to answer them.
Questions or comments?
Ian, did anyone show up for a public comment? I know we're going back in your memory here.
It's a July meeting? Not that I remember. Nothing substantial.
Mayor Smith, Councilman Lawson, Armando, and else, City Community Services Director. The neighborhood meeting had four people show up. They had, as is often the case, questions about various things, including concerns about traffic on Vista Boulevard. For the most part, as I recall, the people who showed up to the meeting were from the single-family development to the north.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, this is a public hearing item, so I'll open up the public for anybody who wants to make any comments. Seeing none, bring it back to the council for action. Looking for a motion, Ms. Bybee?
I move, based on finding Z1 through Z3 as set forth in the staff report, to adopt Bill 2749 in ordinance to rezone real property approximately sixty-five acres in size and generally located east of Golden Eagle Regional Park and south of Vista Boulevard Sparks, Nevada, from A5 agricultural to SF-6 single-family 6,000-square-foot lots.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Rabbit?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes, you answer your, thank you. Thanks, Ian. 11.4, public hearing discussion and possible certification of a comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use designations on a site approximately 167.1 acres in size located at the southeast corner of La Pasada Drive and Pyramid Way from 14.1 acres of multifamily residential, 50.9 acres of commercial, 33.6 acres of employment center, 46.9 acres of intermediate-density residential, and 13.1 acres of open space to 19.1 acres of multifamily residential, 38.6 acres of commercial, 33.6 acres of employment center, 54.2 acres of intermediate-density residential, and 13.1 acres of open space. I hope I explained that enough. Okay, go ahead.
More than enough.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Karen Melby, Development Service Manager.
Good evening, yeah.
I think we can officially say that now. Mayor Smith and council, I'm Karen Melby, Development Service Manager. Before you today is an amendment for the comprehensive plan to change the land use designation on a site that's approximately 167.1 acres in size, located southeast of La Pasada, which La Pasada is up here, and then the east of Pyramid Highway. The property for Stone Brook is outlined in red, and this comprehensive plan amendment is actually affecting the area that's outlined in pink. As I stated, it's approximately 167 acres of the 610 acres that are of the entire Stone Brook area. Stone Brook was approved with 2,135 dwelling units, 50.9 acres of commercial, 33 acres of business park. The city council approved the Stone Brook final design standards and regulations on April 24, 2006. The portion of the subject property, which is the pink area here, are the areas that have the commercial, the business park, single-family, and multifamily residential land uses. To date, there are two approved subdivision maps by the city council on the eastern portion. Actually, you can see some of the lots already. That would be Phase 1. In Phase 1, there's 617 lots, and in Phase 2, there are 459. Phase 2 was approved by city council on March 14 of this year. A portion of the Stone Brook handbook covered by this proposed amendment consists of four parcels, again totaling 167.1 acres with approximately 8.5 acres of streets. On August 2, 2018, the Planning Commission approved this comprehensive plan amendment. On August 2nd, 2018, the planning commission approved this comprehensive plan amendment. This is the existing land use designations on the property. There is 14 acres of multifamily, 24 MF24, 50.9 acres of commercial, 33.6 acres of employment, 46.9 acres of intermediate residential density, which is this here, here's your commercial, employment center and your multifamily or MF24. The proposed amendment has, um, 19.1 acres of MF24, 33 acres, .6 acres of the employment center, which is the blue here, and then you've got the commercial up here now, and that is, um, 38.6 acres. And then the IDR is 54.2 acres, which is this kind of tan color down here, and then this, it's the same amount of open space, 13.1 acres. The proposed request does not change the number, uh, or types of land uses. The applicants request the proposed to relocate land uses. The proposed changes are in part because, um, the applicant is interested in creating a larger multifamily development, which is not split by the drainage. Up here, it was split by Reach 4. Moving it down here allows them to have a more con- consolidated property for the multifamily development. If the comprehensive plan land use is certified, the Stone Brook final design standards and regulation handbook for Stone Brook will need to be amended to reflect the approved land use pattern before you, before any development can occur on this property. Addressing the four findings, first one is conformance with the regional plan. It complies with goal point one, goal 1.1 because the subject property is located within the Sparks limit, city limits and is a portion of the TMSA. The Stone Brook Plan Development is located in Impact Fee Service Number One and has been included in the city's utilities and facilities plans. Stone Brook is however located outside of the six minute response time for the fire department for emergency and medical response. However, the fire department can request inclusion in this area in the mo- mutual aid agreement with the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District. So this is the basis for the planning commission's opinion that the request complies with the regional plan. Also, it complies with regional goal, plan goal 3.5. On October 10th, 2018, the regional, the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission determined that this comprehensive plan amendment conforms with the regional plan. Addressing finding C2, CP2, which is the implementation of the Sparks Comprehensive Plan, the proposed land use changes increases the exposure to, um, Pyramid Highway for the commercial land uses and the new configuration of the employment center provides more flexibility while integrating the commercial land uses. For these reasons, the proposed amendment is consistent with goal MG1 for providing non-residential land uses, goal MG2 for fostering diversity and land use mix, and policy MG1 for a diverse and integrated mix of residential and non-residential land uses. The increase in MF24 and the IDR support goals H2 and policy H2 by providing additional lands for two different types of housing to meet the high demand for housing within our region. Policy MG5 requires that there be a fiscal impact analysis. The submitted fiscal impact analysis and updated letter concluded that the development will produce a revenue surplus to the city's general fund of 7.6 million dollars over the initial 20-year period. The project is estimated to generate 2 million in revenue for the city's road fund with an estimated expenditures of 8.6 million for a deficit of 7.6 over the 20-year period. Combining the negative road fund and the net positive general fund, the project produces a positive impact of approximately 1 million dollars over the 20-year period. Supporting goal MG20 and policy CF1, the Stone Brook Plan Development, which was approved in 2006, has been included in the infrastructure planning for the region and is part of ISF, ISFA Number One. As the development occurs, the impact fees will be collected for sanitary sewer and storm drain and also, um, fire improve, um, station. Finding CP3 is compatible with the surrounding land uses. The Stone Brook Plan Development has been approved since 2006. These are just a, a rearrangement of the land uses, however, it is also located at the southeast corner of La Pasada Drive and Pyramid Way. This request to change the land uses on 167 acres of the 100, 610 acres. The intersection of La Pasada and Pyramid is a commercial node in the county and to the south is Tierra del Sol Plan Development and, and then also to, also the Washoe County Regional Park Lazy 5. The planning commission determined that the proposed land use change will not adverse, adversely impact the surrounding land uses. Addressing CP4, which is public notice, public notice was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on July 20th, 2018. The planning commission held the public hearing on August 2nd, 2018. The neighborhood meeting was held on December 4th, 2017. There were seven people attending. Those attended expressed concerns about increased traffic on Pyramid Highway and also traffic speeds on Pyramid Highway. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Dare.
I do have one question, just regarding some of the flooding that happens right there. And I know it's not necessarily fully on our side, but it's on the county side. Is there any, uh, conversation that happens with that or any requirements or, I just, if you go down there during any flooding, we've spent, I, I know Mar- John Martini spent many times down there, we're trying to clean up messes. Uh, is there any?
They are trying to work on both, um, flood improvements. Right now, when we're working on the developments on the east here, we're working on, um, improving the flow for the channel for, um, I think they call it Reach 4.
Yeah, Reach 4, yeah.
Yeah. So they're working on that with this development. Um, obviously, we only can do improvements within the city.
Yeah.
But they're trying to do improvements as the, as this project does get developed.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, this is a public hearing item, so I'll open up the hearing to the public. Anybody wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for action. Ms. Bybee?
Ready to make a motion?
Okay.
I move to certify a comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use designations on a site of parks roughly 167.1 acres in size located at the southeast corner of La Pasada Drive and Pyramid Way from 14.1 acres of multifamily residential, 50.9 acres of commercial, 33.6 acres of employment center, 46.9 acres of intermediate density residential, and 13.1 acres of open space to 19.1 acres of multifamily residential, 38.6 acres of commercial, 33.6 acres of employment center, 54.2 acres of intermediate density residential, and 13.1 acres of open space based on finding CP1 through CP4 as set forth in the staff report.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second, Mr. Abbott.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes, Ian Nancy, thank you, Karen. Good job. Comments from the public? Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time?
Bill.
Bill, come on down. Thanks for sticking around, Bill.
Past your bedtime, isn't it, Bill?
Yeah, right.
I'm right there with you.
Anyway, can we go back to general business from, business for a moment?
You can go anywhere you want, Bill, it's your three minutes.
Seven, 9.7, 9.8, can someone explain to me or to this group estimated annual costs?
Bill, you know, we don't make, we don't, uh...
I know, I know, but maybe, maybe the city manager can help me here.
We can do it after you talk.
Okay.
Okay.
I knew that would happen. I just...
You tried.
I had to try.
That's it? That's it?
That's it.
Mr. Driscoll?
I'll be happy to have a conversation with Mr. Wager.
Okay. Okay, um, anybody else in the audience wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for comments. Mr. Dare?
Just want to welcome you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, congratulations.
Thank you.
We survived one meeting so far. We have many to go.
I know, we made it. See, I, I get here and it takes us three hours to finish a meeting.
I was gonna point that out as well.
I hope the others want to say.
I know, I know. Any other comments? And I'd just like to say, um, I'm so excited about the coming years and that, uh, working with our council, I think we have the best, uh, group of people in the, in Washoe County and look forward to big things from everybody and I, I certainly appreciate the chance that, uh, been given to all of us, actually. So, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we are adjourned.